Visitors or parents here, welcome. You're always welcome. We really though love seeing our students. So you all are the prize. You're the, you're the real deal. That's who we want to see. You're the most important. They're beautiful. First thing on our agenda as I call this meeting to order is a moment of silent prayer. Let the minutes note that all board members are present. Item one says the reading of board team commitments. Ms. Lisa is going to read those for us tonight.
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements, continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district, make each decision based on facts and the best for all students, listen to each other and speak freely, work together, support each other and not surprise one another, discuss board deliberations to point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information, support the majority's decision, projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning, operate without personal or political agendas, respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully, delegate implementation to superintendent and education team and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Item two is to adopt the agenda. Dr. Ballinger, there's no changes. Okay, need a motion to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Item three is our school and community showcase. And the privilege tonight to have Ms. Coleman here with some of her students.
Thank you for having us. I'm Debbie Coleman. I get the privilege of being the principal at Roundstone Elementary. And I have two of our Eagle leaders here with us tonight. I'm going to let them introduce themselves if that's okay with you.
Hi, my name is Claire. I'm in fifth grade and I'm from Scottsdale.
So these two young ladies are part of our leadership group at our school. And they had a little bit bigger role they were going to play. But since we haven't been in school to kind of help them practice, I was not going to ask them to expand. So they're going to stick with our original plan. And we're just really here tonight at the beginning of the school year to talk to you about some exciting things that are going on at Roundstone Elementary School. So we'll keep going from that. The first thing I want to do is to let you know our theme this year. Our theme is, and you'll see all of our staff wearing these uniforms as we call them, our jerseys. We are the Roundstone Team for 25. We have one team and we're after one goal at Roundstone Elementary School. And we spent a lot of time in what we called our preseason work, which was our professional learning before the school year started, defining teams, talking about roles on teams, and really making sure that all the adults in the building, all of us, were on one page in terms of what our goal was. And so I do want to make sure that I go ahead. Welcome some new team members. I have, we have a new third grade teacher, Ms. Ponder, who's going to focus on math. Ms. Ferguson's in first grade. And we have Ms. Carter who's working in our kindergarten class. And Ms. Gibson in food service. So we're real excited to bring on some new team members this year. And feel like we've made some wonderful additions to our school. So a team, we defined it as a group of people that are working together towards a common aim or goal. Then we had to define what that goal was. And when we started, we had a whole wall full of goals. There are things that we want. But we had to really drill that down to a long-term goal. And then our goal for this year. And so our goal at Roundstone Elementary, go ahead. For this year is that all staff, regardless of the role you play, are doing whatever part you play to make sure that all students are working on grade level. Because we have a wild goal that I brought to you on last year that we are absolutely committed to. We're a year past that now. So in 27, 28, every student will read on grade level or above at Roundstone Elementary School. Because readers are leaders. And so we want to help achieve that. Rocket learners to rocket leaders. So how are we going to do that? Well, first of all, we have a clarity for learning goal this year. Clarity began at the middle school. The work began at the middle school last year. They're going to talk to you, I'm sure, later in the year about the benefits of that. That's moved to the elementary level this year. And we actually are just rescheduling some work now for that. We're very excited. Our leadership team is in place. So every teacher in that building and every instructional assistant in that building, what does each standard mean? What should it look like, most importantly? One of the things we talked about as a team, you have to be able to visualize what victory looks like. You have to know. Sports teams don't seem to have any problem with this. But sometimes in education, we think philosophically without being practical. So we want to be practical. If a standard talks about inferring, what does that look like at second grade? What does she have to do at the fifth grade level to prove proficiency? And so we'll be working on that. Engage students. We can't get students to work on a grade level unless they're engaged. So how do we do that? Well, we've spent a lot of time training and cagan structures. And I'm very excited to tell you that in my walkthrough so far this year, I've seen them going on in every single classroom. It was exciting to see. We even use them in our professional learning with each other and adults. We have new schedules that they're going to talk to you about in third through fifth grade. Our highly qualified or highly high-quality instructional resources, we're following those to fidelity in our core. And our specials team developed an even better enrichment schedule for this year. I believe in democratic leadership. And they came to me with a plan. It was fantastic. And they're implementing that. So that we're getting extended arts, dance, music, and access to the humanities. Right now, they're in the middle of an Olympics competition. And it involves everything from math to dance. And I'm excited that they've developed this all on their own. Obviously, with Senate Bill Nine, we're looking at the reading improvement plans. Those align right with what we wanted to do anyway. So for us, it's, it is a lot of extra documentation, but it was in our plan of action anyway. So we're excited about that. And I'll talk to you about that just in a second. We shortened our win time this year at the request of our teachers so that we could expand tier one. But now it's even more focused. And I really love the plans that grade levels have brought to me, how to use that. And that's what I need time. So make sure we enter the win acronym. And then small group instruction is our focus and the primary. We have worked on the schedule so that we can have up to six people available in kindergarten. And these say, well, six people. But please remember, we only have two kindergarten teachers. So we're making six adults available to get as much smaller construction as we can. I'm very excited to talk to you about the reading, agreed to succeed assessment plan. Our literacy team came to me last year and said, we've really been working on, we know this is coming. We wanted to try to start drafting what this needs to look like. And I know that looks like a lot, but in the essence, Senate Bill Nine requires that every student that has a percentage percentile, we then have to go further and diagnose why they're below the percentage percentile and meet their needs and document that. So once the Roundstone literacy team had a draft, I'm so proud of the work that the three elementary schools have been doing together. All of our literacy leaders then met and fully developed this. And so now there is a plan that every school will do the same way. So we're all going to use the same diagnostics and the same screeners at the same pattern. And that means if a child moves from school to school, we share that information. Nobody has to sort over. And so it's been fabulous to have partners like Mr. Williams and Ms. Becky Smith. I think we've worked exceedingly well together. Mr. Thomas Coffey, obviously leading our way. So what's new? Well, I'll get to them because they're the most important part today. But we're fully implementing UFL in grades K through two. We started that. We talked to about that last January that we were piloting it. You need to come watch that in action. I invite you. I'll give you a schedule. Come see students heavily engaged in phonics and phonemic awareness. Watch them building words and learning how to build and decode and write. And the science of reading is right there. You just watch it. It's super exciting. And we saw tremendous growth in the grades that we're implementing that last year. KCM, the Kentucky Center for Mathematics. Obviously, all of our elementary schools are engaged in that work. But we've brought on, and even further, we have a math coach. She's going to be working with us through KCM in the office. We asked for this ourselves. It wasn't something mandated for us. She's coming next week to help teachers plan lessons and plan small group instructions. She's going to co-teach with them. They asked for this. They said, they felt like we've not had enough math training. Said, let's get it, whatever you need, let's take care of that. Ms. Stephanie Harmon's going to be working with us the same way with science. She's going to help them plan lessons. They asked for this. So we're making it happen. PBIS, which is the proactive and positive behavior intervention and support systems. We're very excited to be on board with that this year. We've already started a lot of processes. We have common expectations in every area of our school now. If you say, how should you act in the cafeteria? One of these ladies should be able to list you the way that should happen. What does it look like in the hallway? What does it look like in restrooms? What does it look like in a classroom? And we'll be developing that more and more as the year goes on. We have a new master schedule that they're going to talk to you about. Fourth and fifth grade basketball is in full swing. And departmentalization for the first time. Roundstone Elementary has departmentalized. Now, that doesn't seem like a big deal at some of the other larger schools. But for us, we only have two teachers at each grade level. So to be able to talk about four core subjects with two teachers just seemed a little overwhelming at first. But our amazing staff got together and proposed a plan on how to make that work in fourth and fifth grade. And I'm going to let these two ladies explain to you how that's going to work or how it's working.
So last year, we stayed in one classroom. And we had one teacher teaching all the subjects. But now in this, this year, we're switching classes. We'll have one teacher for math, reading, social studies, and science. And each period would be one hour.
And what do you think the benefits of that are? As far as what did you come up with?
The benefits of like what we're doing is like our grade level is going to get ready for middle school as they are using different periods in classes, different like subjects. You also get current and you engage more and experience more than what you would on a regular one classroom.
Do you feel like it's working so far? I know we've only been in school for a couple of full weeks, but how do you feel so far about it?
I like it's going great right now because it's just a start. But I feel like it'll go better.
What's been the biggest benefit for you this year?
So having different teachers. Like each of them might be better at one subject. So I think that may be better.
And our teachers are really excited about it. Our teachers are very excited about it. And I think that energy has translated to them. That whole end of our building has just a new energy to it. There's a lot of pressure on fourth and fifth grade teachers. There's a lot of accountability for the, for the elementary grades right there in those two grades. And so what those four teachers decided to do was I have a fourth and fifth grade math teacher that stepped up and said, I'll do fourth and fifth math. And we have fourth and fifth science. Now, fourth grade science is assessed, fifth grade is not. So the fifth grade science teacher, while they teach science content, obviously to prepare for the seventh grade test, they're also doing informational reading. And then in social studies, fifth grade and social studies is assessed. Fourth grade social studies is Kentucky Studies, which we're really going to be able to get into now and use informational reading there. So the students are actually getting three different experiences in informational reading, which has been a deficit for us. So we're putting intentional things in place to improve that informational reading.
Can I ask your students something?
Absolutely. I told you you might want to.
What, what is your favorite subject? What do you like?
I like math.
That's wonderful. I bet you make really good grades too in math.
They don't break on themselves. These are two exceptions in a row. And the thing that's most impressive about both of them, not only they're great students, but they're really good role models. We have new students come to the school. We ask them to meet those students. I've watched them in the cafeteria. We just have the most caring little place at Roundstone. It's just a sweet little place. That's growing. Our enrollment is way up this year. And so we are, and we are trying to welcome a lot of new students this year and make them feel part of that Roundstone family. But is anything else you want to talk about in terms of our schedule or anything else exciting for you?
So does the changing of classes make your day go a lot quicker?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what the boys have told me. It's cool, but the day just flies by. And we kind of hope that too, right? We hope that for them too, and getting that new and fresh start. But with PBIS, the expectations are the same in all four classrooms. So you may have four different teachers, but the expectations are the same, right? Because we all feel like that too, the expectation. And they communicate. So they have a common planning time. We've built the schedule around the four of them, making sure they have a common planning time as well. But in third grade, we're doing something just a little different. We only have two third grade teachers. So we're doing a hybrid. So for reading and math, they will switch. So we have a reading focus, that's Ms. McKinney, and a math focus, which is Ms. Ponder. And then for science, social studies, homeroom, and other activities, they'll be back in their homeroom. So that's working out really well. They have ninety-minute blocks to make sure that we can do a lot of. And helping them transition. Obviously, in third grade, you're transitioning from learning to read to reading to learn. It is a very hard grade. And I have two really high-quality people. We're excited about that. So to wrap up, we just want to make sure that you're watching for celebrations. Go ahead. We're going to celebrate a lot of things at Roundstone. Sorry, that was your slide. Go ahead, one more, please. You're going to hear about our Eagles of Excellence Awards. We will be, not only our KS scores, but we will, KSA scores, will also be doing Eagles of Excellence for positive behaviors and being a part of our team. And our teamwork awards. We'll continue with our I-rated growth parties because we want to celebrate growth. Our PTG participation is increasing constantly, which we are very excited about. We have the mother-son dance coming up in October. So they're getting ready to run that. Our attendance is up. Marcus and I were really excited about, what, ninety-eight percent? We're looking at the start of the year. We were able to win that attendance cup four or five times last year. It earned that money right around and invested back in the kids. And they were so excited. And with PBIS, obviously, we'll have lots of shout-outs and celebrations. We're also recognizing and supporting our staff. Because some people might say, oh, I'd love to be at a little school. It must be so much easier. No, everybody has three to four to five hats that you wear, you know, at a school our size. And they all just do it with such grace and such energy that they really inspire me to be better than they can be. Do you want to know anything else you want to say about Roundstone? That's awesome. That's where we are to start our school year. And we're very excited. And thank you for letting us share a little bit with you all.
Thank you, girls. Thank you all for coming. I would like to say thank you to the parents who brought them up. They're just, they're beautiful.
Ms. Coleman, I love the energy. Love it.
Thank you for bringing on. Appreciate you. We always highlight our children, but I would like to just add, what an amazing job in leadership that you're doing for Roundstone Elementary. So Ms. Coleman, we, as a board, we truly appreciate you and your love for little people. Precious cargo for us. Next, number four is public comment. I'm not aware of anything. Item five, operations and actions. Any questions for Dr. Ballinger? Need a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Item six is our discussion and action. A, review and approve the twenty-four, twenty-five working budget. Jenny?
Good evening. It's that time again to take a look at the budget. This particular budget, this is the third time that we've been discussing. So it's not new, but it is refined. So we'll just kind of jump right in. One of the things that, you know, that's been a great contribution to the development of the budget has been the community-based accountability work. And I just want to give a big shout-out to all of our team members for their input. Ms. Angie Stalsworth serves as a board member on our, on our team. Ms. Debbie Coleman. Ms. Marion Childress. Ms. Jenny Ellis. Ms. Erin Grace at the high school. Ms. Katie Christman is a parent representative, also an employee at Mount Vernon Elementary. Ms. Becky Boring. Mr. Neil at Lone Star. Mr. Chris Settles at Wendy's. Isaiah Jackson, our student from the high school. And Mr. Steve McKinney with the Chamber of Commerce. And we really appreciate everyone and value their input. We've been able to take some of the things that we've discussed in our meetings and put those into action. And we'll talk about those as we talk about the budget. But just really appreciate the time that they devoted to our team. One of the areas that we've, that came out of our community-based accountability, and this is no new information, but just to revisit, our goal is to ensure the district is financially responsible and is using its resources to further the district's mission. One of the glows from our area was supporting our Rocket leaders. If we need great staff in front of our students to make our students successful. And we've made it a priority, not only this year, but in future years, we will continue to always make our staff the priority and, you know, do what we can with the resources we have available to continue to expand salary schedules and fringe benefits to our staff, both classified and certified. We, we value everyone. And we've talked about some of those areas that we've been able to do the past few years. But, you know, the last four years, a ten percent raise, you know, I think demonstrates the value that we place in our staff. Our grow, our district finance team is steadfast in its commitment to ensuring financial responsibility and efficiency, utilizing resources effectively to advance the district's mission, continuously working with our vendors. We aim to expand purchasing options at the school level, providing a wider array of choices while maintaining cost effectiveness with a model procurement framework. While the, while we always try to expand what we're doing, we are held to accountability with the requirements that the state of Kentucky places on us. And our district is a model procurement district. And we work through bid purchasing with Purchase Pros, KE DC. We have bid vendors. But additionally, our ongoing collaboration with ERP Enterprise, it's our district accounting system. We've always referred to it as Munis. It has a new name. It will always be Munis to me. So it allows us to drive continuous improvement, streamlining processes, and enhancing financial transparency and accuracy. Our team has, you know, with the start of school, we've already had three days just in the last few weeks of training, taking some deep dive into some new system upgrades that we're still wrapping our head around. But we will get there eventually. Just to kind of give an overview of our general fund revenues, let's kind of jump into that. Our total revenues for this budget year is over thirty-five million dollars. This includes local sources like property taxes, state funding through SEAC. The largest revenue is our state SEAC funding at twenty-five million dollars. And state funding in, in that amount is SEAC. It also includes on-behalf resources. So on behalf, the state pays for health insurance, life insurance. We have to budget that in, in our budget and reflect that in all of our reporting. So that's over nine million dollars. Our projected expenditures match our revenues. Our major categories include instruction, support services, plan operations, and our contingency of four-point-three million dollars.
Ms. Jenny, before you get further, can I ask you a question? As far as the on-behave payments, and that is, that is factored into the SEAC formula, I know. But that is a cost that the district pays, correct? Or am I wrong?
So it's not part of SEAC. But it is part of our budget. So that twenty-five million dollars combines SEAC and the nine-point-two million dollars that is called on behalf. What that means is that like our life insurance and health insurance is paid directly by the state. But for accounting purposes, we reflect how much they pay on our behalf. Clarify that.
Instead of us sending them checks, instead of them sending us a check for it, they pay it directly.
They pay it directly. We, kind of as part of the audit process, you know, they give us reports that tell us how much they paid for our Rockcastle County for health insurance. And we reflect that in our, all of our financial statements. In comparison, the. Um, in comparison, um, the twenty-five budget shows an increase from the previous two years to actuals in both revenues and expenditures, indicating growth in the district's financial operations. Special revenues, those grants are really important to Rockcastle County schools. And I've given you just kind of a glimpse of actuals, uh, fiscal year twenty-three compared to fiscal year twenty-five. You know, we had some growth, and we all know that growth came from, as a result of COVID and the response being ESAR funding being available, ma- made available through the federal level to schools. So through twenty-three and twenty-four, we, you know, we saw that decline, and we're now settling back into our regular budget. You know, so there will, you know, if you look at our budget side by side, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, it's very obvious, obvious, obvious that you will see fluctuations. Those fluctuations, um, I hope some, ten years from now, someone will say, what on earth went on? With those budgets? And it was all because of the ESAR funding. So it, you know, it's, we're, but we're back, we're settled back into our regular budget, our regular revenues and expenditures, and we're moving right on with, with ease. Capital projects and construction, how exciting, uh, what a year it's, it's going to be for Rockcastle County schools. We've said it once, we'll say it again, it's always great to be a Rocket. Um, capital outlay funds are consistent, um, com- in comparison to last year. And, you know, we've used capital outlay funds for a variety of things. Um, we can use it for, um, small building projects. We've used it for, um, there's a couple of years, we may have used it for property, to supplement our property insurance more recently. We've utilized that to purchase buses. And you can also use it as a transfer for debt service. Um, building fund, a significant increase as we are ramping up to build a school. But three, a little over three-point-five million dollars for twenty, twenty-five. That also includes our debt service transfer. Um, and as you recall, we've talked about Fund Three Twenty as building fund. We transfer debt service to Four Hundred. On the balance sheet, it's always zero because it comes in and out as transfer. So that line item's always zero from a month-to-month basis. Construction fund, um, that budget is not reflected in, in what I've presented to you. I would like to bring that in once we sell bonds and we have all of our accurate numbers. Um, and we can, we can pull that out and look at that separately if you would like to, once that's all kind of established for the year. But in previous years, we saw varying levels of activity, um, with four-point-four in revenues in fiscal year twenty-three. As you recall, the legislature, um, provided four million dollars to Rockcastle County schools. And, um, that has grown with interest, and we were able to, um, we had some residual, uh, projects that we were able to reallocate. We had a state approval for some old construction projects. We had some little pieces that we also added to our middle school project. That's ref- reflected in that four-point-four billion dollars. Most recently, in fiscal year twenty, um, four, we've designated projects for Mount Vernon Elementary School and the high school, at a little over one-point-four million dollars. Sorry, I've not said every single, uh, number. I, it, it's easy to get tongue-tied on all those numbers. I don't think we want to spend all that time. But what is our why? Why do we have a budget? These are the faces of Rockcastle County schools, faces of our staff, of our students, um, our community, and Rocket, Rockcastle, um, Rocket leaders to Rocket learners. That's what we're about. And, um, when, when I'm thinking about developing a budget, I think about these, these young people. And that is the focus of this board, to, to focus on students. And we're going to talk about how our budget is a student-centered budget. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that. Um, so student-centered budgeting, making every dollar count. I can attest that every single dollar that Rockcastle County schools has access to is budgeted, allocated, and designated for student learning. In instruction, student support services, instructional staff support services, and school administrative support, everything that makes the school day happen, we are spending, um, over twenty-four million dollars, um, focused on students. Just in the instruction, direct instruction budget alone, over eighteen million dollars. Eighteen million, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and twelve cents. Focused on instruction. And Rockcastle County schools and the Board of Education has always been, um, made that a priority. And we continue to do that. And I think, um, under Dr. Ballinger's leadership, we have expanded upon that, not only with state dollars, but with federal dollars as well. Plan operations and maintenance, we pride ourselves in all that we do to maintain our facilities with a budget totaling over two-point-eight million dollars. Just a shout-out to our school and district staff dedicated to, and to maintaining facilities for student learning. We have some older buildings in Rockcastle County. They do not look like older buildings. They are beautiful, they are clean, and they are well-maintained. And, um, hats off to, to Mr. Trent and his staff, um, for always doing a good job to take care of all of our, um, all of our schools. Student transportation services, our fleet of sixty buses and our outstanding team of drivers and mechanics provide student transportation to schools, to activities. Uh, we spend over two-point-five million dollars, um, in this budget dedicated to student transportation services. Again, all those things that are focused on, on schools. Wow, our food service operations. Isn't it just a joy to brag on these outstanding, um, employees that work in our food service program? I was very excited for a school to be back in session because that means those of us at central office can eat school lunch. And, um, there's not anything I would rather eat than school lunch. And, um, you can sit in meetings, um, I know our, our, all of our central office staff, our principals, you, you hear other schools talk about school lunch. There's not that same pride that there is in Rockcastle County. I mean, we have an outstanding program. And again, um, food service operations operates outside of the general fund budget. Um, Mr. Chris and his staff do, um, an outstanding job in delivering, uh, quality meals to our students. And it's so important to their day. You'll see, if you look at, at revenues, and you're like, okay, well, how do, why are we going to spend? Why do we have more budgeted for revenues and expenditure in twenty-five than we do in twenty-four? Remember, in looking back at twenty-three, twenty-four, those are actuals. Um, and some things were different with food service, um, reimbursements during COVID. Um, so we'll start settling back into, um, a more routine budget with food service. There were higher reimbursement rates that made an impact. But, uh, when we start the year, we start with the ending budget from the prior year and the projected, uh, revenues and expenditures for the new year. So that's what, that's why those numbers, um, would look a little bit different. Okay? Uh, great job, hats off to our food service staff. So just to look at our revenue sources, um, again, we, we operate on local, state, and federal. Local sources, just to recap that, include our property taxes, utility taxes, um, interest on investments. And that is projected at over four million dollars, uh, for local, um, revenues. Our state sources, our largest source and primary, uh, funding is SEAC. That's projected to be, um, over twenty-five million dollars for the year. Federal sources, that includes various grants and reimbursements. Um, one of the reimbursements that we get that is federal, and you don't often hear us talk about reimbursement that's federal, and that's Medicaid billing, um, that we have. So, um, about three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars comes back into our budget that we, um, we spend, um, again, on students. That's considered a federal sort, source, and, um, a very important part of our budget as well, all of those grants that we talked about. Just a summary and an outlook as to where we are and where we're going. Um, we have a balanced budget. Our revenues are balanced, and, uh, with expenditures, again, totaling over fifty million dollars. That budget will soon grow, um, with the addition of our construction project. Funding shifts, um, notable changes include increased state funding. Um, our legislature was very gracious, and increased funding for SEAC for this year. We'll have an additional increase for next year. Decreased federal funding as ESAR, um, is ending. We're wrapping up our final, um, purchases under ESAR and our reimbursements. And we'll, we'll close those books, and all that will be left with, will be quite a bit of reporting. But, uh, public schools are dependent on state funding to support students that are attending public schools. It's very important. Um, capital investments, significant increase in our building fund as we are preparing as a school board, as a school district, and as a community to prepare to build a, a new building. How exciting. Um, the budget fiscal responsibility, the budget maintains a, um, a substantial contingency fund. Uh, we're at four-point-three million dollars. And this demonstrates prudent financial planning for emergencies. So if, if there's a catastrophe, we're prepared for that. If there's, um, some unplanned loss of funding, um, we have some funds that we can sustain our district. And that is very important, and that has been a priority and a decision that you, as a board, have made. And, um, we make that a priority and, and budget that accordingly in our, um, annual budget. A fiscal system does not work well without an outstanding team. And we have just that. Um, this team works tirelessly for the students and staff of Rockcastle County schools. Just, um, Jenny Ellis works payroll and finance coordinator. Ms. Marion Childress, um, our accounts payable clerk. Ms. Carol and Carpenter are purchasing clerk. Ms. Becky Boring, um, with payroll. And Ms. Joan Berg, um, is the administrative assistant to special education. Special education and the reporting and how that plays into finance is very important. And we appreciate each and, each of these individuals. It doesn't happen without them, and I just can't say enough about how much I appreciate them. And that's a wrap. Um, we are, we are moving on with fiscal year twenty-five. Um, it's a good budget, best budget we've ever had. We continue to expand and improve in every area. And, um, again, when we think about budget, some people think about numbers. I think about, and I know you do, you think about the faces of the students of Rockcastle County schools. Any questions? We can, we can dive deeper into any area of the budget that you would like, but you have a copy, um, for your reference, and as you review. If you have any questions, or if you review later and you have a question, feel free to call, stop by, we'll, we'll talk more.
I made it myself a note, I do have a question, but I'll wait and let everyone not have to listen to me. May take you a while to explain it to me, Jenny.
Sure, no problem. Anytime, anytime. But, um, just appreciate the board's support of, of all that we do. And, um, you know, again, I know you're a board that puts your, um, your focus on students. And it's a pleasure to, to be a part of that.
Well, Ms. Jenny, I would just like to say, as a board, uh, we can't thank you enough, you and your team. Uh, we don't do anything. I mean, you all are the ones that are putting the work in, and, uh, and are, these, these faces that you see, uh, have smiles because of the results of all the work that everybody at this, at this level does. So, um, it's, I very much appreciate you, all of you.
Leadership, um, not only from the board, from, but from Dr. Ballinger. Um, you know, we have seen a grow, a growth in partnerships and in federal funds, grants, um, as a result of, of her leadership and, um, the leadership of district administration in taking the extra time. You know, you do not receive a grant by just, it's not handed to you. It's a lot of extra work. And, um, you know, the central office team and our principals, everyone works really hard to maintain those partnerships and to develop them and to implement. Um, you know, you can chase dollars with grants, but you have to implement with fidelity to continue to be successful in that arena. And Rockcastle County Schools does it well.
I know you gave us that number, the dollar amount for the grants. Uh, do you, do you know how many grants we actually have?
I knew you would ask me. At the end of the school year, um, grants and projects. Um, so there are some special projects, or maybe, um, one of our schools received a donation that we want to track and be able to show reporting of how we spent that. At the end of the fiscal year, we had a hundred-and-sixty. Um, today, on our accounts, we have a hundred-and-forty. And I, I, I knew you had that, that question. So, um, as of today, um, there are four, a hundred-and-forty active grants and projects.
That is a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
A lot of paperwork.
And I say we're monitoring, we're keeping up with them, grant sunset, so we plan ahead for that.
Yes, yes. Um, you know, some of our grants require matching funds. Some of our grants are, you know, partially fun staff. If they partially fund staff, that staff's budgeted in a grant. It is also, um, um, budgeted in just our general fund dollars because we have to be able to show that we're supporting the whole staff position. You know, you can't get to the end of the fiscal year and, and be scrambling to, you know, because you, that's just part of grant management.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank both of you, Jennies. Jenny Square. So you want else, have any questions?
If not, I need a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five working budget as presented tonight.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Item six B, review and approve the monthly financial report.
If you've had an opportunity to review those, do you have any questions? Um, really just the start of the school year, um, you know, just really kind of getting things rolling. Um, it's been a time of lots of purchase orders. We'll see much more activity next month, um, with purchasing and, you know, supporting our, our classrooms with the new school year.
Here's a line I've never paid attention to before, and it just struck me because of the percent omitted property tax. Can you explain what that is?
There may be taxes that were omitted that, um, that we just track separately. Um, sometimes that is also, um, taxes that were collected in another county that are sent to us. And we're required to, you know, to track those separately for our reporting, reporting and reconciliation, you know, at the end of the year with the audit.
Well, that's coming way over the edge, so I have to give it.
No other questions? Just a motion to approve the monthly financial report. All in favor? Item seven, discussion review, it's a review of the superintendent's personnel action report.
Yes, it is very old. This is showing that the time of the year it is in our school schedule, but did, do you have any specific questions?
Sounds good.
Do we have any decisions posted?
Um, special education at the high school?
Uh, item number eight, department reports. Those loaded, and Noah wants to share today.
Y'all really quiet. Ken, you're really quiet over there, buddy.
Just glad to be here.
We appreciate all of you.
Item number nine, superintendent communication, Dr. Ballinger?
Yes, so, um, we have been in school nine days. Unfortunately, we've had, um, some events in our community that have kept us out of school the last several days, but we're looking forward to moving past that, and we're looking forward to having our kids back in school. Um, we do have the hunger walk coming up next Thursday, so I would like to invite all of you to participate in that if you're able. Um, that's always a great event for our community. We'll be happy to order you some T-shirts. So if you think that you would be able to be here to participate in that, let me know, and we'll get those for free.
Thank you. Board comments?
The work at the high school and, and the elementary school paving work looks, looks really good, especially the high school, and the new parking lot, so hats off to. especially the high school, the new parking lot, so hats off to everybody who's involved in that, Trina Spaceley.
We have a little bit of clinical at the moment. Amendment two, that'll be on our ballot coming up in November. Please educate yourself on that. If you have any questions, I would be happy to talk to you about it. It's super, super important to our school system.
Nope, no good.
Surprisingly, I have nothing. I know you all don't believe that. Rocky's over there laughing. I do appreciate all of your hard work. I've heard nothing but such great stuff from school, beginning of the school year. I think this may have been the best beginning of a school year.
It's been great.
It's been great. So kudos to Oliver's staff and our kids for loving to come to school. It speaks volumes. So with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So would.